This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, May the 7th. Please stand for our invocation led by Public Safety Chaplain Bobby Brown and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we bow and pray. Father God, we come with bowed heads and uplifted spirits, knowing God that it was you that had an angel of mercy that camped at our by our side last night. Had an angel that called us individually by name to see a day that we had never seen before. And I thought of God, we come because we are troubled at this time that there is something that is happening in our communities where young men are killing young men. We need you, God, to come and step in and talk to them and whisper to them when they feel that they're getting ready to do wrong. Look at these men and women who walk the streets, Father, as policemen trying to keep our communities safe. Look upon this city, God, with the blessings that you have already bestowed upon them. Let them know, God, that you are still sitting high, looking low and hearing and answering prayers. Touch these, your people, that come assembled this morning to be a part of this community. Touch the leaders that you have elevated, God. Not us, but you elevated them, God. Let them know, God, that they have a purpose, and that purpose was given to them by you. And, God, we will give you all the praise and all the glory in the precious uplifting name of Jesus we pray, and the people of God said, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands in the name of the Lord, and to the republic which stands in the name of the Father, and to the Father who has given us the life, the liberty, and the justice of us. Amen.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see you all this morning. Welcome to our May 7th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please, at this time, put it on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Any person that has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to respond or address the council to a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the ending of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there shall not be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Again, all electronic device on the off or the vibrated position. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of April the 23rd and April the 30th.
So moved. Then properly moving, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see you this morning. Once again, we appreciate you taking time to come down and join us today. I have two announcements, and then I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. This, we have a project tonight from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at Bishop State having to do with the MLK Avenue Complete Streets Project. That'll be held at Bishop State at 6:00 PM to 7:30 about the rebuilding of MLK Avenue. Also, at that point in time, there'll be, will actually be at the Mobile County Commission Lecture Hall, which is the Center for Advanced Manufacturing Technology on the campus. It's in the Center for Advanced Manufacturing on the campus. The next item has to do with Art Walk. It's this Friday. We'd ask you to join us from 6:00 to 9:00 PM for the upcoming Low to Art Walk, and this is where we are, you can experience the creativity of our local artists where they're showcasing their work, and you can also delve into the kids' zone for comic-themed crafts and enjoy watching talented character artists bring out their characters to life. At this time, I'd ask Patrick Cooper, the son of General, recently deceased General Cooper, to join me at the podium. As all the city council knows, General Cooper passed away several days ago, and at the last city council meeting, there was a moment of silence for him, but we felt it was befitting to have a proclamation for him on his behalf. So his son, Patrick, has joined me, and, you know, Patrick came here from the French Riviera. That's where he's living now. So I know that while we are certainly, I've given my condolences about his daddy, he will tell us all, as he told me this morning, breakfast is a great life on the French Riviera. So. So the proclamation reads, whereas on October 2nd, 1936, Jerome Gary Cooper was born in Lafayette, Louisiana, and was the son of Al Janon Johnson Cooper Senior and Gladys Catherine Cooper. And whereas, after participating in Naval ROTC at Notre Dame, General Cooper joined the United States Marine Corps, and during the Vietnam War, he became the first African-American to ever command a Marine Corps Infantry Company. And whereas, during this time in the Marine Corps, he was awarded the Navy Distinguished Service Medal, the Legion of Merit, the Bronze Star Medal, two Purple Hearts, and three Republic of Vietnam Gallantry Crosses. And whereas, General Cooper served as an Alabama House Representative, a member of the Governor's Cabinet, Assistant Secretary of the Air Force, and was the U.S. Ambassador to Jamaica. And whereas, in addition to his public service, General Cooper was the CEO of Commonwealth National Bank and served on the Board of Directors of Gencor, U.S. Steel, Protective Life, and PNC Financial Services. And whereas, a decorated, as a decorated U.S. Marine, a statesman, a diplomat, and a business leader, he was always an agent of positive change and passionately fought for things in which he believed. And whereas, General Cooper had a way of expressing himself, so the listener was rarely confused about his directives. And whereas, General Cooper led an incredible life of service to his country and was a valuable member of the Mobile community, he will be missed greatly by all those who had the honor and privilege in knowing him. Now, therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim this day, Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, as the day of remembrance for Major General Jerome Gary Cooper. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My father always said that when he passed away, be sure to hold a great big party and celebrate that he had a great, wonderful life. I'm the chairman of Commonwealth National Bank. I've been the chairman since 2018, and the bank was my father's great passion. It is the only hometown bank in Mobile. We're a mission-driven bank. We are a certified community development financial institution where over 80% of our loans go to low-to-moderate income people in Mobile. And I was delighted when the mayor and the city council adopted the legacy program. And I recently hired two female lenders, African-Americans, who are excited to work on the legacy program. We're going to get that going as soon as the airport gets a little further along in terms of hiring some vendors so our folks can do some work. And we will keep you abreast. And if anybody ever has any questions about the legacy program, which I think can generate probably 30 million circulated money in the Mobile community, particularly in the disadvantaged community, please call me. Even though I'm in France, I get back here every two or three months, I kick the tires on the bank to make sure everything is going great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Then properly moving, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on May the 11th on Dolphin Street, May 26th on South Broad Street, June 14th in Cathedral Square, Beenville Square, and Conti Street, June 29th at James Steele's Community Center, May 11th on Aaron Drive South.
So moved. Second? Then properly moving, second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 7701, 7705, 7709, 7621, and 7631 Old Government Street Road from R1 to R3.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, may come down to the podium by stating your name.
My name is Mike Demoff. I'm the president of the Lakeview Highland Park Community Association, and we just got voted into the city here not too long ago, and so far, it's not been very good. This apartment complex that they're going to build on Old Government Street Road is going to increase the traffic through our neighborhood by 225 apartments, probably 1,000 people are going to live there, and they're going to cut through our neighborhood over to Providence Hospital from Schillinger where Walmart and Home Depot is. And there was no traffic study done. They had the community meeting over a year ago, and we would like it to keep R1, to keep the amount of people that live in the area down, because it's just, it's gotten to be a total mess around there. So we'd like you, like y'all to consider keeping it R1. I guess that's about all I got to say. I could say a lot more about our lake and the clean water I act in and how the city has ignored us in that respect. I've written letters to everybody. The only person that ever wrote me back was Gina here, and she referred her letter to the mayor, and, you know, nothing ever happens. You know, as far as, so far, the city hasn't done a thing for us. In fact, they're a detriment to us. So anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then I'm going to ask the audience to please seize your talking, your, the volume is keeping up, coming up towards the, up here, and we can barely hear the speaker. Again, seize your talking.
Hi. My name is Donna Shory on 7640. On 7640, that's my mother Frankie Williams. She owns 7630 Old Government Street Road. We are directly across from the planning development, and we are for the development. Anyone that lives in that area knows that all that area right there where the development is going is vacant land, and there's homeless people that live all in there. They have trash, there's drugs, there's, you know, and we have to live across the street from it. So we are for the development. We believe that, you know, coming in with the townhomes and developing that area will eliminate the homeless problem, and we have to deal with drugs, homeless people, the trash. The trash is unbelievable. So we are for the development.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on this particular said item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Mr. President, I'd like to remind the council and speakers, when you come to address the council, please speak into the mic so that everyone can hear. We have to keep the air on in the auditorium so that we don't suffocate in here, but if you're not speaking into the mic, the audience can't hear you in the back, nor can they hear you on the live stream. So please make sure that you pull your mic to you when you're speaking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Matt Armbruster.
First of all, thank you for letting me come give you an update on the program that we partner with the city. It's called Road to Work. It's taken men. Oh, my name is Matt Armbruster. Do you need my address, too? 5914 East Ridge. So it's called Road to Work. It's a trash detail that we take homeless individuals that are chronically homeless, and we put them to work. We pay them a $9 an hour wage. They work 30 hours a week. Y'all know what program it is. I want to give you a few numbers because everybody's really big on numbers. We've had over 100 people go through this program. Of those people, 47 have went into our recycling program where they then are giving, given mental health assessments. They're also given case management. They get OSHA 10 trained, they get forklift certified, they go into work. Of those, over 30 have been employed in our community. Everybody knows about Otis, but I can tell you about Patrick, DeMiko, Tina, Aaron, Chris, James, John. Those are the guys that really matter. And I could give you all these numbers, but I'm going to tell you from the heart what changes. People are being reunited with their families. People are not on the streets begging, they're not out doing crime. You know that's been proven that 15% of the people that are in prison were without a job 30 days prior to going to jail? And also, 5% of those were homeless before going, before being arrested for the crime. So it fits a lot of things. This program fits one Mobile litter free. We've, we're on track right now to take 60 tons of trash off our streets. And this is with people that have been, that were sitting in the parks begging money from our people coming here to see what Mobile was about, or they're in there stealing stuff from us. Also, sheltering unhoused. We've been able to open two houses that shelter people, but we don't have ESG funds, we don't have a grant for it, they pay for it because now they have a job. Now they have a way to do it. So also that we are fighting crime. Again, 15% of them were without a job before they went into the prison system or into the jail system. So we're saving money. Through the Robin Hood Foundation, it's proven that $107,000 per person you put back to work goes back into your community. According to those figures, we put more than $4 million back into Mobile because we put them to work and we let them work. So here's my question, what's next? I want to partner with you in so many different ways. I got so many ideas how we can put people to work, and I know we have a job or a employment shortage. We need people in logistics, we need people that go to work, and I'm here to help, I'm here to help with that any way that I can. So just remember that if you want to sit down, I can share the ideas that I got, and we can see what we can do. But I appreciate the City of Mobile for believing in the people that we serve on a daily basis.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor?
Matt, you've already done an incredible job. I think there were a lot of doubters when you initially made your proposal to us, but you've proven all those doubters wrong, and so just thank you so much for what you're doing, and we definitely want to listen to how you can partner with us in the future. So thank you very much.
Lori Hunter?
Testing. Can you guys hear me? Want to make sure you can hear me. Go. Greetings. My name is Lori Hunter, and I am a resident of Mobile Housing Authority's Downtown Renaissance Development, where I serve as the president of the resident council. I came before you today to shine a light on the issue of low-income housing and the vital role those social safety nets play in providing safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for many of our nation's vulnerable households, including myself. In my case, I never imagined I would come to live in public housing because prior to the 2008 Great Recession, I had achieved the American dream as a successful real estate professional, and I was even a Section 8 landlord. Yet, here I am. In a twinkling of an eye, my financial success became collateral damage of the most tragic financial downturn since the Great Depression. I lost my home, and I was bankrupt. Had it not been for public housing, I could have easily fallen through the cracks. This is why I'm compelled to speak up about what's tragically happening with our city's greatest source of low-income housing, the Mobile Housing Authority, which has been and continues to be plagued with rampant corruption and has been designated by HUD as a trouble agency since 2018. Agreement by, after 2021, after showing no signs of improvement, Mobile Housing Authority was placed under a recovery agreement by HUD, which was, which assigned the City of Mobile Oversight Authority. The agreement was put in place to implement a strategy for the recovery of good governance and sustainability for this failing agency by the end of 2022. Yet, to this day, Mobile Housing Authority remains noncompliant under the dictatorial control of its current executive director, Michael Pierce, whose abuse of power and lawlessness has led the agency down a rabbit hole of rampant corruption. Under his tenure, thousands of residents have been made to live in deplorable conditions and illegally and unethically pushed off public lands that are coincidentally located in areas slated for the city's revitalization plans and shiny new international airport. So the city, so the question to you, City of Mobile, why has Mr. Pierce's rogue behavior been allowed to continue? It is, is it coincidental or complicity? And why have the residents been denied our seat at the table when everyone claims to be working on our behalf yet not willing to work with us? And let's skip any scapegoating because when I reached out to the mayor and every one of you city council members, I received little or no response.
One second. I'm going to ask the council, because this is an important topic that you're speaking of, if I can grant you just one more minute to speak, so I can get two council members to, yes, one more minute.
Thank you. I've reached out to every one of you and have received little or no response. So again, I'm here to beseech you, our civil leaders, to do the right thing. I'm asking you to call for FBI investigation into the Mobile Housing Authority's organized crime. It's time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Mrs. Hunter, a lot, when I say a lot, a lot has been happening and going on between, you know, several council members, the administration, and trying to work with the housing board. Mrs. Trotter also signed up today, and once Miss Trotter has finished, I'm going to ask the administration to step in and to address some of the issues that you have brought up with concerns. But trust me, we have been primarily criticized on Channel 15 to et cetera, but we are working diligent and especially working diligent with the administration, and the administration been trying to work with the housing board. I'm going to ask the administration to address some of your concerns once Miss Trotter finishes and everything.
Okay.
But thank you so much for coming.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah, I'm sorry your time has expired, though.
Actually, it hadn't. My minute wasn't up. I finished before it was.
Go ahead.
I'm just requesting that you include the residents. You can't do good housing for us if you don't involve us in the planning process. So I'm just asking that you guys include us, like residents like myself and Miss Trotter, who are advocating for our rights.
And trust me, the housing board, just like we the city council, the housing board have its own board also.
I know they've advocated their authority to Michael Pierce.
Yeah, and the thing about it is that everybody's on term, just like the council's on term, and whenever their term expires, again, they have to be, you know, put back up and everything. But we had the administration to address you. But thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Audience, I'm going to ask one more time, please seize your talking.
Mr. President?
Mr. Carroll?
Your statement was 100% correct when it comes to the appointment of board members being on terms, but I don't think the executive director is on terms at the Mobile Housing Board, is he? I think he's appointed by the board. That's right. He can only be removed by the board itself, and I don't think the board intends to remove Mr. Pierce at this time, Ms. Hunter.
And again, like I stated, you know, they are on terms, okay? Madam Clerk?
Estella Trotter?
And audience, if I have to ask the audience one more time, I'm going to ask the chief of staff to ask you to remove from this meeting. Again, please seize your talking. Sorry, Miss Trotter.
Y'all need to get a new mic because even when we watching on YouTube, you really can't hear like you, people need to hear. I feel like I am very traumatized.
Give me your name.
My name is Estella Trotter. I live in Thomas James Housing, one of the developments to be demolished. There is no excuse for the City of Mobile to not have done something about thousands of people who have been harmed, living in some of the most deplorable conditions, but yet I see on the news where this city council spoke of now putting a 56 unit out West Mobile and saying those people should live like that. For over 10 years, we've seen old ladies fall through floors, roofs caved in, floors caved in, mold mildew. It looked like Vietnam. Has this city council been out there? Are you concerned about the old ladies, the senior citizens there? Have you been in any of those apartments? No, you have not. It's a disgrace, and you're making excuses. Ms. Hunter has just talked about a recovery agreement where the Mayor Stimson, Velma Byron, the director of HUD, Michael Pierce, and Norman Hill at that time, who was the chairperson of the Housing Authority, where you had a responsibility and an obligation to make sure that the standards in Mobile are supposed to be corrected, which was too late in 2021 because you let it rot over so many years, and it was intentional. But even though you signed that recovery agreement, you still did nothing. You did nothing, and it was intentional. And it's like right now, gentrification. It's corruption. And I'm standing here shaking because I'm so angry. Even the recovery agreement was spoke about January 21st, 2015. Housing Board receives another standard management designation. Kenner, who was the director in Birmingham at that time, later also advised Ball that sat on the housing board at that time, the HUD, may initiate actions and, and, and actions to develop a recovery agreement for Mobile Housing Board to document and ensure recovery efforts have been put in place. This was in 2015. It's no doubt about it that you intentionally let it rot. A lot of black people have been harmed, and I invited all y'all to come out, but you didn't because you didn't intend to. We live in one of the most racist cities that you can live in. I'm going to sit down right now, but it's not over. It's not over by far. And as a matter of fact, get us some mental health, yes, because most of us feel like we've been through war and still going through war. But you want to come here and, 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 and give all these different awards for this and that?
Thank you, Miss Trotter.
We ain't through with you.
Thank you, Miss Trotter. Thank you, Ms. Trotter. And I do agree with you, uh, some of the statements that you made, Ms. Trotter. It is in bad condition. But I have, me personally have been over there, and I believe Councilman Carroll has also been over there, too. And there have been many times that we tried to communicate, and not only just as council, but state representatives have also have tried to meet with the housing board. And again, there's only so much that we can do, because that's their own agency. And all that we can do is just pretty much advocate and try to talk to them. And that's, I, again, I had stated earlier, we have been criticized, and I can speak on myself and Councilman Carroll as trying to bully an individual, which was not true whatsoever. You know, I'm not down here trying to bully nobody, no agency or anything like that. I'm just, I down here to try to speak up for the people. But the statements say that we have not been out there. That is very untrue statement. Uh, but the statement that we have, us personally, especially Councilman Carroll, myself, you know, we have been out there, and I know the mayor has been too. But again, the Board is the one that appoints the Executive Director. And only way that the Executive Director can change is through the Board. But again, we doing a whole lot more, and I'm like that, ask the administration if they can just speak on some of the things that we are doing, and especially around the Thomas James community, and trying to make affordable homes in the City of Mobile.
Uh, Mr. President, be, be, before the administration says anything, um, uh, let me, let me just briefly, um, back up what you said. Uh, there was a word used that I have a certain disdain towards an individual, and I've had it for 20 years. I, I'm not upset with anybody or have any type of disdain. Uh, it's been said that, uh, I wanted to bully an individual into building projects for, uh, lower moderate income people or people that are less fortunate with low income. Uh, that's not true either. Uh, but I think most of you know that one of the things that is really close to me is affordable housing in this city. Uh, I'm aware that we have a major shortfall on it. I've been trying to work on it now for two and a half years, and, you know, we're close on another opportunity uh, that I'm still waiting to present to the administration, uh, with a date and, and get it approved, so we can get it working. But, uh, know that our housing board has a situation where it really can't build uh, the way it used to. They can't, uh, I think the one-for-one was taken away, and they can no longer do that. They have to have a developer to do whatever they want to do, and I, I, I don't know how much energy they're placing into that, and I don't know how much energy they're placing into the facilities that they have. But they are a separate individual agency from the City of Mobile. Granted that the mayor appoints the Executive Director, and he's voted on by this council, and he appoints the board members, there are still a quasi-governmental judiciary Board of Directors that operates separate from us. It is every desire in each one of these council members up here that we have safe, clean, quality, affordable living. I, I cannot say that no one up here has ever said that they do not want that. Now, every one of you know that we, that I want that. And I, I, every one of you knows that, that hopefully we can get that coming. For those of you that know me, know that I want that. So to shake your head and say, no, you don't know me, so you can't even say that I, what you know is true. So let's not even go there. But I want affordable housing in this city more than anything else. But at some point in time, I agree with a lot of you, this city itself is gonna have to get involved beyond what we're doing with Alethia House and the other larger developers in, in, in having affordable rental properties. We're gonna have to do something that actually increases the quality of life and bring back homeownership, help revitalize neighborhoods that are underserved. We're gonna do that, and I agree that we need to do that. But to say that we've done nothing, that's not completely true.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join in with my colleagues to say that every housing authority um, that's located in my district, I have been to and outside my district as well. I actually have served, um, that community before I became a council member, um, where the kids know me in the neighborhood, where I have to walk them to their house that I, I was a part of. So I have been in the homes, um, and I, and, and I totally agree that we have to do something, um, better than what we've been doing in serving our community, because the conditions are bad, um, because I seen it firsthand, working with the young people in my community, as well as the senior citizens located in my district. Um, so that information that you shared was false. Um, I totally agree, um, that the conditions need to be fixed. But I think to move things forward, we need to be factual and not share information that's not true. Um, and we need to tell the truth on every aspect of it. Um, and the, the truth is something does need to be done. Um, the council only have so much jurisdiction in that particular area. But I will support any initiative to make sure we have change. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Mr. President, I want to clarify a number of different things. There's, number one is neither the mayor nor the council has anything to do with appointing the Executive Director of the Housing Board. It's, it's a separate entity. I don't think that was said intentionally. I don't want to clarify that for the general public. What does happen is the administration does actually appoint the board members. Other than that, there's no authority by this council or the administration over the housing board. I think as y'all rightfully said several times, it's a completely separate legal entity. Most of its funding comes from the federal government, and it has to follow those federal guidelines. What it also brings some clarity to what was being talked about is for the recovery agreement is concerned. That recovery agreement does mandate a number of different things that the housing board has to do, a number of different metrics that they have to meet. All of those were put in place by HUD. None of them were submitted by the council or the administration. That's all from HUD. And so they've been meticulously going through that list and trying to meet those, those different metrics in the recovery agreement. I think, um, Jamie Roberts was gonna talk about some of the things we are doing in housing. As Mr. Penn mentioned, there is a number of things that we've been doing on the city side that deal with affordable housing, but that's separate and apart from dealing with the housing board. Last thing I want to clarify is, we're not aware of anything, uh, i- in, in the way of, you know, corruption dealing with the housing board. We understand it is a failing or troubled organization in accordance with the HUD guidelines. But that is, that has been a, a number of things over a number of years that they are trying to fix, and it's not happening fast enough for anybody, not this council, not the administration, of course, not the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Before we move on, uh, so that we have a true clarification and understanding, because evidently I don't. Uh, how is the executive, Executive Director of the Housing Board chosen, and how is it ratified?
Yeah, you, if, if that question's for me, then...
How is he chosen and how is he ratified? Yes, please answer that, because, uh, evidently I don't understand how it works.
Okay, so in order to answer the council's question, is the Board, the Housing Board, Board of Directors, they choose the Housing Board Director. And that is, um, it's, it's a combination. It's a personnel board position, um, in large part. And it is, it's done so by contract, but that is a Housing Board decision. Neither the council, nor the mayor, nor the residents have any input directly in making that choice.
So there's no recommendation?
No, not from, not from the council, not from the residents, not from the administration.
Okay, I know the council doesn't make a recommendation, so the Executive Director goes through a process of vetting through the merit system, where there's a score and a list of 10, and then they pick from there?
So I, I will tell you, typically, yes, you can have provisional, but that's a question that you would have to ask directly to the Housing Board members. So I wasn't there, and I don't represent the Housing Board. They have their own separate entity, their own separate board, their own separate lawyer. But I can tell you that it is a position that is in the merit system, which is its own separate issue.
But the administration, but the mayor recommends the appointee of the Board, correct?
The Board members are selected by the mayor and confirmed by the council.
Uh, audience, if I had to, if I had to address this one more time, I'm going to, especially the second row to my right, I am going to ask the Chief of Staff to remove y'all from this meeting. And I might ask again, please seize your talking and feedback. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, um, just to add to the conversation, uh, so yes, the 56 units in District 7 were announced uh, last week, uh, with Alethia House's developer. That was a Chodo-specific tax code application cycle. Wouldn't have been anywhere else in the city or the county if it hadn't been for that particular nonprofit coming involved. So that was an opportunity we did take a couple of years ago. It was announced last year, and probably ground broken last, last week. Yep, so the, uh, like I said, the 56 units was a special cycle, uh, highly competitive. Uh, it's almost a one-off issue, as far as that's concerned. Uh, in the area of Thomas James and RV Taylor, there's 96 units right now under construction, uh, first building of that, it's Maryville Place. Uh, first building of that is, uh, scheduled to get a CO likely in September, if not a little earlier. The, uh, because the coordination and the vouchers involved, the Housing Authority actually dictates the process for the tenants coming in there. So they should open their website application in the next month or so. Uh, there'll, there'll be signs on the site announcing when that's happening. But they'll, it'll go through the Housing Authority's website to apply for residency there. Uh, all income-based, 95 vouchers out of 96. The 96 unit is affordable. It's gonna be the manager, though, so it's not as income restricted. That's Building 1, opening September. Building 2 and, I believe, 3, they'll be opening in, in separate phases throughout the year. They'll all be open by the end of the year as the plan. The second phase of Maryvale, which is the back part of the property, which is currently vacant, that's been submitted to the state for a tax code application. So if we get awarded for that in, uh, June or July, that'll move forward towards the end of the year. If not, it'll either be resubmitted in the 25 cycle or flip back to a bond, which bonds are more of a guaranteed process. So the city's intention is to build at least 50 more units on the backside of that property. Uh, and then we have the single-family piece, uh, on our, former Arlington School Site, which is at least 20 houses uh, right now for homeownerships, the, the scheduled, uh, plan. Uh, the developer's been selected. We're waiting on final numbers and exterior designs on that to get that going. That's, uh, you know, gonna be close to 200 units total, right there, just shy of 200 units, that the city's doing. Some vouchers, some not vouchers, but all affordable.
When we're at Arlington, we're approximately start, you know, kickoff.
Uh, we're looking at quarter four this year, quarter one next year. It's gonna be a little bit easier because it is single-family, uh, but we've got to get a street in there and replat it with a developer, but, and, and get those numbers together.
Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, was that worth bid out?
No, uh, developers are not required to be procured the same way as everybody else.
So a developer didn't have to submit a, uh, RFQ or RFP?
No, it's not required under federal or state.
Huh?
It's not required by federal or state law.
So the money that we're using, there was, you can sole source this to a developer, is what you're telling me?
Not a sole source. Uh, developers, it's the federal interpretation, developers are required to have risk in the project. And that risk takes away the procurement process, because it's not a consistent system.
Sole source doesn't go to risk. It goes to you picking a sole person based on everybody you know.
I flipped the card, because that's a difference and nuance.
Yeah, you know, I'm not, I'm just saying, there's no competition there, is what I just heard, on what, 20, 26 houses?
So we don't, so what we do is we go through a development selection process. We do, we do actually accept those applications. So we wait, we make sure that people have the capability and the risk. There's so few people who actually do that or who want to deal with us on the city side. Um, if you're looking at an RFP process, neither one of those are required by law practice or policy for this particular type of fund. So what we do is we go in and we partner with them on a regular basis. And so, you know, if somebody was to suggest that you want to have an RFP process, that's something that you can probably do with the program that you're putting together in the future. That is not something that we do with these particular funds, because we're trying to move and be competitive with each one of these cycles when we dealing with the state for the 4%, the 9%, and dealing with the bonds.
And, and I'll add to that. We, we actually have a, a once-a-year announcement saying we're taking rolling applications from developers. So there, there's a pseudo-RFP process.
Right, we announce it, what we don't do is put out an RFP. It's not a secret. It's publicly put out there for anybody who wants to come in. There are so few developers who not only qualify for the 4%, 9%, but who actually want to front-end the cash and put the risk in for us. So very few that want to do that, and...
Uh, well, I mean, I've never seen it in public, uh, you know, I, I know people and individuals that deal in the housing market and are doing developments of this type uh, individually, and I would think that to make it competitive, I think it needs to be more transparent, and more people need to know about it. If I don't know about it, and I'm in the industry, that's an issue. And I'm also on the council, and I don't know about it, which means that decisions are made for these types of developments that city controlled money without the council knowing, and I've got a problem with that.
So the, the process is...
So I, I'm just confused right now, and this is something we need to talk about somewhere else.
Oh, no, no, no. We, we can talk about this publicly, Mr. President.
So, so we can, we can have a committee meeting or something. But you just, what I just heard has me totally confused. Now, I'm, I, I love what, let's get back on track. I love what we're doing with affordable housing. Alethia House and the recent development, that's great. Uh, uh, the, 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 uh, uh, Offy Offo Hotel, that's great. But I just, I, I was a little concerned what I just heard, and, and I think that, Mr. President, we might need to take a look.
If, uh, go ahead.
Mr. President, go ahead.
The publication's actually also on our website, along with the developer application. So it's all available on the website right second.
You have to know when it's published.
It's published once a year when we do our annual action plan, but it stays on the website throughout the year.
Yeah, but nobody in the public knows when we do our annual action plan. That, that's what I'm getting at. Just, let's talk about it.
So, Mr. President, I, I, I want everybody to understand that this information is put out, out there publicly. Mr. Penn chairs the entitlement committee. We sit in the entitlement committee, and we look at all of these different issues. We're happy to put this in front of, put what we do publicly out there each year. It's on the website to, to, to espouse to the public that it's not transparent. I, I just want to bring, bring some clarity to that. It's on the city website. Anyone looking for it who's capable, qualified, and competent to do it. Now, if you're sitting here as a developer who, who can't do it for some reason, maybe for instance, either the capital's not there, we'll even help on that end. So we want all comers to come to the table. We're not trying to make sure that only certain people have access to it. The other thing we want to make sure is there are a number of city council members who are either new or returning, and most of these decisions were made years ago prior to this council being seated. You, Mr. President, you are on the council, and, and, and so was Mr. Davis, and so was Ms. Gregory. When we went through this process of allocating, moving very quickly so that we can spend the funds in a timely manner. But just want to make sure that anybody, any questions, we're glad to answer them, committee meeting or otherwise.
Now, let me go ahead and interject. Um, we're gonna go ahead and have a committee meeting and, uh, bring things, um, to the table before we can have an update. Just to see where we, exactly where we at in about two to three weeks. Let's, uh, set a committee meeting. But I would say to Ms. Hunter and to, uh, Ms. Trotter and to the citizens of Mobile, uh, I know for a fact between Mary Stimson and even Councilman Carroll have been working very, very diligent as much as they can um, with and around the Housing Board to make sure that there are affordable houses within the City of Mobile. A lot has been going on, um, behind the scenes, you know, trying to get, you know, somewhere, you know, especially by a certain timeframe. But again, we need to, uh, be, uh, brought up to date. So I'm gonna schedule a committee meeting, uh, between two to three weeks, and, uh, we can go forth from there, and it's be a very public meeting and everything. And again, uh, thank you so much, Ms. Trotter, and, uh, also, um, Ms. Hunter for coming down and, uh, bringing this to our attention. But again, I promise you, we are working very diligent. And, uh, if you can catch myself or either Councilman Carroll, we can tell you a, a lot more than versus what's going, going across this diaphragm.
Mr. President, can I make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, and then Mr. Carroll, and then back to Madam Clerk.
So, when we announced the Maryvale project, it's probably the first, uh, public housing project announced in the city of that size in 15 or 20 years. And had it not been for the Mobile County School Board, which sold the property to the, um, City of Mobile, and the City of Mobile found a developer to do that, we still wouldn't have that project. We did that, and the only interaction with the Housing Authority has to do with the vouchers, the people that will be living there. So it had to be done in partnership with them. We have set aside, uh, see Jamie, Jamie, how much, fifty, about $50 million? We have set, we have set aside, Jamie will tell you the exact number, of money to go into affordable housing, uh, simply because we recognize that it is one of the greatest needs that we have. That money is not, cannot go into rehabilitation of those houses, if I'm correcting what I'm saying. Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong. It's got to go into something new, and it's got to be leveraged to people that go get tax credits and are willing to put their money at risk also. So the money that we've, we have set aside, hopefully will build multiple houses. But a lot of the houses... But a lot of the house, that when you're living in the, where you live at Thomas James, you know, there's only a limited number of houses that can be built back in that area because of hood requirements. So Jamie, correct me if I've said anything wrong there.
So when we're all sudden, it'd be well over fifty million because of disaster funding coming down also. There's twenty nine million, those dedicated construction type projects out of the ARPA funds. Additional five or so for soft funding, real assistance type.
Plus the.
Yeah, real, real assistance type funds, down payment assistance. The city's annual grant, we dedicate the vast majority towards housing out of that. It's three and a half million total a year. At least two million, two and a half million is going to be for housing in a typical year. But like I said, the fifty four million dollars coming from the state from disaster funds, we're still going through the planning process. We're about to kick off and have a public announcement for that as far as a meeting, interaction. We've been data crunching up to now. Looks like the vast majority of that will be towards housing also.
My last comment would be that we're under a deadline to try to move as fast as we can because if we don't have that money obligated or spent by the end of twenty twenty six, it has to go back. And so when City Council President Small says there's a lot of work going on, there is a lot of work going on. But there are a lot of boxes to check and a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot. And if it was simple, it would already be done.
John Robb.
Good morning, I'm John Robb and I live at three oh eight Whacker Lane North, President of Friends of Mobile Trees. And we're here two weeks ago. Since then, I want to commend Urban Forestry for the work they did on the Spring Hill Avenue in being reactive to potential safety hazard out there, the trees they were taking out. That was great work. It's the tree commission's role to be proactive about our urban forest and they're simply not meeting. City code says that they're supposed to take the lead on planning of the urban forest. And I've lost count of how many meetings they've canceled at this point. The last time we had a discussion two weeks ago, that afternoon, they canceled their meeting again. So we had Minnigan and Associates come in last year and do a consulting report about all the boards. And their specific recommendation for the tree commission was for them to work with nonprofits like Friends of Mobile Trees to plant trees. And I'm here today representing our group to tell you that we're standing by our commitment to give the city the money to buy the trees for West Mobile to replace the trees that were taken out. And all we need to do is sit down, as Councilor Pennant said two weeks ago, and talk it out. Because all we're asking the tree commission to do is to come up with a species of the replacement tree. And then Urban Forestry on their schedule can plant the trees. So we're reiterating our proposal to do that.
A comment from the council.
Mr. President.
And Mr. Carroll.
The mayor and I were at, I can't believe I just drew a blank. Caroline Street, the Duffy Oak presentation. At that presentation, I had the opportunity to speak to several people from the tree commission plus Peter Toler. Have you spoken with Peter Toler?
I've spoken with Peter over the years about this. This is going back two and a half years now.
Have you spoken with him last week?
Well, recently he hasn't returned my calls. So how could I speak to him if he hasn't returned my call?
I would suggest that you set a meeting and speak with Peter Toler because the trees can be planted and they're willing to help you. So I would suggest setting a meeting and getting down in front of, you've come down here three times already, asking for the city to plant trees. We've told you how to obtain the permit. We've told you where to go to get the work done, but still you keep coming down here. Sit down, speak with Peter Toler in the departments and plant the trees, man, please.
Urban forestry has confirmed that we don't need a permit to give the city money to plant trees. We would need a permit if we were specifying what trees were planted where.
Work in the right away. It has nothing to do with urban forestry. Get the permit, plant the trees. If you need help waiving the permit, but still obtaining the permit without cost, then that's the discussion you need to have. But you keep coming and we're trying to help you plant the trees. Man, if you want me to come out there with a shovel, I'll dig the hole for you. Plant trees, but have a conversations. You're coming down here beating everybody up for nothing.
I'm not beating up anybody.
Please.
We're just simply asking them to do their job.
I'm not trying to be mean, but I want you to plant the trees. I want to help you plant the trees. We've had this conversation ten times. I'm gonna help you plant the trees. How about coming to see me and I'll walk you, walk you through the process?
Is that your district?
No, it's not, but I love trees.
Well, I do too, but it's not my district too. I don't live in the districts where the trees are going.
Listen, I'm through with it, but let's please plant the trees, okay?
Well, let me make one point, please.
Not Mr. Robb.
Can I make one point?
No, your time has expired, but I do want to say that, and you can have a seat. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. I've spoken with Shonda Smith, the Executive Director of Public Services, as well as Peter Toler. And Ms. Smith assures me that they are willing to work with you, Mr. Robb, to get done what needs to be done. The tree commission, however, does meet when they do not meet is because there's no agenda items. So they do not meet when there are no agenda items. But I've spoken to my appointee and he says that yes, they do meet when they need to. But Ms. Smith and apparently Mr. Carroll are willing to walk you through what needs to be done in order to get your trees planted. We certainly appreciate your group contributing funds to the city to plant trees. I mean, that's amazing. We really appreciate that. So thank you and please let your folks know that we appreciate that too. But Ms. Smith will get with you and your group and we'll get it all figured out. So thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Mr. Mayor.
So we have plenty of time to organize this because now is not the time to plant a tree unless you can water it. And we don't have the ability to water them on Airport Boulevard. And so we've got, you know, probably until November to come up with a game plan to make sure we got the right tree, right place. And so, yes, we will work with you to make sure that happens.
Reverend Tony Allgood.
I'm Reverend Tony Allgood. I believe it was a week or two weeks ago in a pre-council meeting, it was brought up about the five hundred thousand dollars that was going to be used to improve the parks. And that is, that's great. Problem is though that there are still some parks in town that don't have playground equipment. They don't have benches around for parents to sit. And the parks always serve as a safe haven for the families and the children, especially they don't have access to other forms of recreation. Also, we talked about the E B T program. That the funds were cut for it for this, this summer. We do know next year it's taken care of. I believe they got the education budget to pick up the cost of the summer program. But what's going to be done for this summer for the children to be able to eat? Those that are really, really suffering. You know, it comes down to where do we set our priorities as a city, as a country? And it does not appear to be in our children. We do know that two point eight million dollars of our tax funds out of Mobile go to support Israel aid. What we're asking today is, is there, yes, I'm speaking on the budget. Is that community policing, police officers being sent to Israel to be?
I'm sorry, what, what are you asking about Reverend? What did you say? I didn't, couldn't understand.
Yes, if, I'm asking if under the police, community policing and national training, have police officers gone to Israel to be trained?
Not as far as I know, no. We, as far as I know, no police officers in the city of Mobile have been sent to Israel, nor will they.
And we know that we, that we invest funds that have been set aside, right?
For what? For what?
For extra, extra funds.
For?
Are there any extra funds set aside?
For what?
That are invested for anything?
We invest funds all the time in the city, yes.
Okay, does any of that go to support Israel?
Reverend Allgood, you know that the city of Mobile does not get into anything going on in Palestine, Gaza, Israel. And we are not allowing speakers to come to the podium to speak about it because it is not city business.
But if the.
So no questions about that.
If we have a sister city.
We're not investing in the sister cities either.
Between Mobile.
Reverend, Reverend, I have told you, we are not talking about that. You need to move on to what your other topics are. Is his time up?
Yeah.
Okay, have a seat.
Madam.
Have a seat, sir.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dave's.
I'm absolutely perplexed now by a couple of things. First thing is Reverend Allgood is not the only person I've heard from saying that the city has invested or given or something two point eight million dollars to Israel. And I want to ask the administration if they are aware of any money that has gone to support Israel.
And that went down.
That's exactly what I see. Thank you. So I don't know where that, Mr. Allgood, your, your time is finished.
Mr. Dave's.
So I, so I, if that idea is out there, it's wrong. It's wrong. The second thing I'd like to say is ten years ago, this city was broke. The city, the city was broke. We had no reserves. We had three hundred million dollars in debt. We had a hundred million dollar unfunded liability in the police and firefighter pension plan. We had not spent significant money on capital, including parks, for years and years and years because it had all been shifted out of capital into operations. Now fortunately, the situation is different today. We're amortizing the debt, we're amortizing the unfunded liability in the police and firefighter pension plan. We've reduced the debt, the city's debt to below a hundred million will be completely paid off if we don't take on any new debt in the next six or seven years. We're spending between thirty and sixty million dollars on capital every single year. But, and we have spent over the last ten, eight years since the city got its financial condition in order, millions of dollars on parks, millions of dollars on parks, on resurfacing, on drainage and all the things that were neglected up until that time. But you don't flip a switch and make everything perfect overnight. It's gonna take some time to work through all these issues. We still have miles and miles of streets that need to be resurfaced. We still have significant drainage issues throughout the city, including in my district. We still have parks that need attention. But we're working through it. But it takes time to, 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 to fix, to fix all of the neglect that went on in the past. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Thank you so much and thank you Reverend Allgood for coming down and expressing yourself. You mentioned about the, the E B T program and I was glad to hear that the state have approved to make sure that going into the next summer, the youth will have that resource again. And of course, it was because people like you came down and other speakers spoke about it. They brought it to our attention and I, of course, I wrote a letter to, to the governor before that happened to express the disappointment. And so I'm glad to see that happen to, for your questions regarding what's taking place now with our young people. Every recreation center will provide have food resources, decorate. Shonda, all the boys and girls clubs in the city of Mobile and our summer sites will also provide food. And that's not just for the youth that's coming. Any kid that live in the community that would like to be served will be served as well. It's that similar to the parks and ricks. So parks and ricks will have that same service as well. So, and then churches have joined in with that process in serving food. And it's the same process that during that time, anybody that live in that between, I think the ages up to nineteen, eighteen, will be able to get that service and that's our, those are student age kids. And so they will be able to receive that, that resource. You mentioned about the parks, kind of just want to share, I'm glad you brought that up. I kind of want to just speak about District One regarding the parks and Mill Street. Right now, it's receiving a new playground. Trot Settina Park right now is receiving a new playground and Up Dog Park. The Trinity Garden Park is right now is getting redone, their field is getting redone. They have a beautiful playground with a uncovered shaded area. So that's crying, that's, we have Tomerville, that's getting new facilities and parks area. I think that's almost every park in my district right now have active process. And I think it's a need to make sure that every kid have that resource and every resident be able to utilize those type of services in our community. And I just want to make sure the residents of the city of Mobile know what's taking place in District One. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. And I just echo what Mr. Penn said, that every district with a park has work going on, some more than others. It just depends on the year, but there's been a lot of improvement going on in every park in the city and more to come. As far as the summer program, we did have other people come down and ask the city to basically fix a problem created by the state, which we're not capable of doing, but we do have programs to try to offset it and to fill the gap, which the summer program is doing through parks and recreation, boys and girls clubs. There have also been our media partners in town have been collecting food items for the food bank. So we are stepping up to the plate because the state did not provide for the feeding program this summer. Next year they will, but we can still get in there and fill the gap. Anybody else? All right, Ms. Lambert.
Sabrina Mas.
My, 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 Judge Graddock must be in the building today. Sabrina Mas. The first thing I have to say is, since when, well, in eighteen years, I just want to ask this for me coming here. Since when did the mayor get all the power in this city? No disrespect to you, Mayor Simpson, because I like you, I really do. I promise you, I have no hate for anybody in here. But I would like to know, since when did the mayor get all the power in the city? And Mayor Simpson, since you have all the power in the city, can you serve us some right and some peace and some justice? And I'm just asking that cordially because it's always been a strong council and a weak mayor, they say, no offense. So what's wrong with this situation? I really am asking that question and I would like an answer today. My next thing is, if there's going to be an investigation, I assume there is still going to be an investigation. Are you guys gonna bring Chief Pryne to the table to be included on who may investigate this? So that we all can be at peace on whoever you select, that then we can come and say it's been a fair investigation for all. Because we don't know who is telling the truth and who is not. We just want clarity and we just want to know. And that's just the facts on that. So I have another question. Are these things, have you guys thought about being in violation of the Zagabi Act? Because some of us have read the Zagabi Act, have copies of the Zagabi Act and we know what the Zagabi Act means. We are some intelligent people, while Sabrina Mas is, I'm very intellectual. I think you should know that by now. Now, I want to ask one more thing. Again, why was Chief Pryne terminated from being the police chief? Why? Now, I hear him some insubordination. Well, let me tell you this, I am a retired nurse and I promise you, if I had a boss or bosses that were bullying and harassing me allegedly, I wouldn't report to them either because people are, they are covered under the hostile work environment laws. Did you not know that? Y'all know everything else, did you not know that? So sometime you have to back away from the people that you think you are being bullied and harassed by, whether that's true or not, I'm not sure. We just want answers. This city is divided. We are not at peace. This is wrong. And you know, I hear you saying, oh, we support the police, we support the police. Was Chief Pryne not a police? What is he? What was he? Really, seriously? I mean, you guys gotta stop this. And then today, I'm just gonna keep it real. Y'all being rude. Because you can never tell me to go take my seat as long as I'm in America. When my three minutes is up, I will take a seat. But you would not tell me to take a seat. I'm grown. I'm an adult. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a United States proud citizen from Texas living in Alabama. So please stop being rude. This is not personal, this is political. This is not personal, this is political. Y'all being personal. Stop treating us like we are nobody, we are somebody's. I'm gonna always be somebody, whether you like me or not. Respect us, and we'll respect you. If not, you gonna get the same thing in turn.
Mary Lou Peak.
Mayor Simpson, members of the council. Peter Joseph Hamilton, a native Mobilean, was born in 1859. In his book, In Colonial Mobile, he states that Mobile was created for greatness. Greatness is a calling to achieve with excellence a specific vision. The founder of our city, Jean Baptiste Lemoine de Revenble, was a great leader. He was not worthy or famous. He was not over, he was often overlooked. Nevertheless, he, his focus was to be a good steward of the French king and the territory of Mobile. Mayor Simpson is a great leader, because he too works to achieve with excellence a specific vision. He has a mo, a bold mission for Mobile citizens to become one Mobile. He emphasizes commitment to transparency, effectiveness, and efficiency. He demonstrates courage by standing up for what is right, even in difficult situations. He resists peer pressure when it conflicts with ethical values. He adheres to integrity of his words, beliefs, and actions, even when faced with challenges. I have not come here today to give you a list of Major, Mayor Simpson's accomplishments. I have come here today to shine light on his character. Character cannot be bought. It is a God-given desire. A man of character pursues truth, godliness, righteousness, and humility. Character defines who we are. To you, members of the city council, I thank you for your service to make wise decisions concerning Mobile. I ask each of you individually to commit to a spirit of unity. For where there is unity, the Lord commands a blessing. The recent incident concerning the former Mobile Police Chief has brought division within the council, with the council and the mayor and the people of Mobile. The actions of Mr. Pryne, operating without moral character and design revenge, has no place in our city. If he were a man worth all the money you have spent to defend him, he would have recognized that he had stepped over the line and quietly resigned. Now the daily business of Mobile has been stymied, and a cry to spend more money on another investigation is completely unnecessary. I ask you to seek unity, to trust our mayor. In 1841, a new guard tower was built in downtown Mobile. The watchman called out at the top of each hour, "All is well." May the sound echoing of Mobile be again, "All is well."
All right, thank you.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, I guess I'm on a holy tear today.
Please, everybody in the audience.
I know where to correct that one. Some of you that are retired military or military understand that when you abandon your post, what happens? When you deliberately abandon your post and walk out the door without notification, there's consequence. After doing that, and there's some type of, uh, what's the word to use? Uh, I can't even think of it right now, but when, when there's insubordination after that, it creates malice and strife within all departments. It creates division. When you go down that road so far, no matter how good the intention, no matter how honorable you're trying to be, you somewhat created a problem that you cannot come back from. Once that problem is so big, no one up here can doggone turn that tide back. It's just an impossible thing to do. So when put into that box and forced to make a decision, that decision was made by this council, there was no way back, not for things to be the way they were. Now you ask why? That was my decision. I put that in my newsletter also. It's unfortunate. It's a very unfortunate situation. I made the statement to the administration 100 times, this wasn't my mess or this council mess that they needed to clean it up. But it got to a point where the city was headed to a certain unavoidable division. People were choosing sides. The city was dividing. The police department, mayorless, maybe choosing the sides based on who the next chief was gonna be, dividing the police department itself. So at some point, somebody had to be responsible enough to restore the chain of command and some type of order to the system in which we operate in. I didn't want to see him go, but he chose to leave on his own when he abandoned his post. So, I, I, you can't talk back to me today. I'm just, I'm just telling you what happened. And if you want to know, that's the same words I put in my newsletter, same one. So if you had read it, you would have known what, what my decision was. It's unfortunate that we're in this situation. So now-
Hey, audience, listen, Mr. Carroll.
Now let's just move on. You, this is, I'm on the council, I can talk 50 minutes if I want to, I'm sorry. But you got me in a-
Hang on, hang on.
You got me in a rant today.
I know, can you time out on the rant for just a second? Mr. Carroll is speaking, and we would like for the audience to please not respond back to him. You're the audience and he is speaking, so please, you know, keep it quiet. I know Councilman Small has asked you over and over to please, no talking back, no responding to the councilman here. If you cannot do that, then we ask you to go ahead and leave and carry on your conversations outside, but let us carry on the meeting here, please. Mr. Carroll?
As it goes to support for the previous chief, there was not one time that he wasn't supported by every member on this council when a decision needed to be made. Was it one time everybody on this council gave whatever the chief needed to do whatever he needed to do within the police department? So as far as support, he always got that. Now, when we talk about investigation, today this council meets to talk about an investigation and how it will be investigated in the process of investigation. There are some things I think, and I think other council members think should be there, whether or not, uh, everyone involved should be questioned and be allowed to give their port or response to the, to the third-party investigator. That's something that needs to be determined. I don't mind if he talks to the third-party investigator, but I'm gonna make sure that the third-party investigator is aware of the policies, the procedures, and the actions that govern our police department, just to, so that that investigator knows whether or not both the, the chief, anybody in the administration, and everybody else is telling the truth. So when we get to the end of this, we'll have our answers. But for now, let's stop putting information out there that we, we or you or anyone else doesn't know if it's all true or part true. Right now, we're going on hearsay from both sides. So let's get through that process, please. You've heard why I said I think this council made that decision. Now let's move on and let's get to the bottom of it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Ms. Lambert?
Jim Walker.
Is Mr. Walker here? Okay.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good afternoon, Reggie Hill. I'm honored today to remind the citizens of Mobile that municipal government boils down to two things, vision and urge. Quoting the late great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "We need leaders not in love with money, but in love with justice. Not in love with publicity, but in love with humanity." This brings us to Fitness for Duty. And I remind all of those under the sound of my voice, uh, this by no inkling of means reflects a personal attack, um, and all its complexity is still city business. It's important to remind each of you, when allowed to, uh, ride political high horses or represent the city at high-end functions, the people aren't inviting any of you personally. They're inviting deceit. These are some examples from our current conduct in the business that are deemed unfit. Incompetency, absolutely mishandling the purpose or intent of investigating, whether through vote or taxpayer spending. Malfeasance, willfully abusing approval for use of funds and intentionally preventing a chief of police from access to necessary intelligence. Misfeasance, wrongfully having citizens removed from this chamber by way of police or approving a lame duck investigation in which you shoot first and maybe ask questions later. Non-feasance, like threatening a city employee to comply or be unjustly defamed with the need of support of a reported council in doing so already available, or conspiring to make the most pressing public safety matters an issue of executive session. Thus being formally removed from the public eye means a premature termination. Everyone should agree that each of these examples mentioned are both disorderly and undisciplined, and you can refer to 11, that's 43, that's 160, I don't know if you're confused. Who's willing to sponsor an ordinance ensuring that all documentation and an approved release of claims is readily accessible for our taxpayers and that formal claims made should have a proper hearing in a timely fashion? Who will sponsor an amendment truly defining undue applause? So it won't seem deliberate when senselessly silencing the people because you don't agree with what they're up here speaking on. We're willing to wrongfully put people out by weaponizing the force in the chamber against its citizens or weaponizing force against our highest decorated city employees. Yet efforts to suppress the mess shall continue to be addressed. The people deserve our best resolve, and we should make sure that that happens going forward. So there's a lot to be done here, there's a lot to compute there, there's a lot to process. Hope you will take time to run through it, because you know we only have 108 seconds, so we need to come back to those rules as well. But we will continue this push and what we've done here, because this has to be resolved. We're gonna see the best quality of life here in the city of Mobile. Yet I still ask, where is the point of order? Thank you for your on the floor.
All right, Ms. Lambert.
Madam Vice-
Mr. Davis?
Points I'd like to make. First is this. Where we are right now is a meeting of the Mobile City Council. It's not a public forum. You can walk out there on Government Street and you can talk as long as you want to about whatever you want to talk to. But when you're in here, you're in a meeting of the Mobile City Council, and you have to abide by our rules. Number two. If anyone in this room or outside feels that anyone in the administration or anyone on the Mobile City Council has acted improperly, you have a right to complain about that. There's an organization called the Alabama Ethics Commission, and if you think anybody on the city council has acted unethically or inappropriately, you need to go to the Alabama Ethics Commission. But coming down here and complaining to us and alleging that we're acting unethically or illegally, I don't think that's gonna get you very far. If you think we've acted unethically, go to the Ethics Commission. If you think we've acted illegally, go see the district attorney. I urge anybody who feels the city council has acted unethically or illegally to take it to the appropriate authority. Thank you, Miss Vice President.
All right, anybody else? All right, Ms. Lambert?
James Williams regarding Resolution 21398.
Morning. My name is James Williams, my friends call me JW. And, uh, I just want to speak briefly regarding the eight million dollars that are being proposed for new tasers for the Mobile Police Department. There are a lot of limitations to tasers, pepper spray, but they are effective restraints. But I have found in my career, when I sewed 10 tags, that that's excessive to me. If a taser is properly used, if you have ever been tased, it's not a weapon to make a person comply with what you want them to do. It immobilizes that person's body so that you can handcuff. So once you tase them, if you've been properly chained, been properly trained, they're gonna fall on the ground. And during those few seconds when they are in convulsion, that's the time that you handcuff them. You don't continually tase them and try to get them to do what you want to do, want them to do, because they can't do it. Their body is quivering, they've been, they've been short-circuited. So that, that's not gonna work. Just gonna harm that person. There are other means of restraint. There can be deployment of some type of net or whatever. Now tasers don't work on everybody. Pepper spray don't work on everybody. Some people, I don't care how many times you tase them, they gonna pull that, they gonna pull them out and keep coming at you. I don't care how much pepper spray you put on, but the average person, if they're tased, they're gonna go down. And if that officer's trained properly, he can go up and handcuff and put them in restraint. But he's not gonna be able to just keep tasing them and think that they're gonna do what he wants them to do. And I think those eight million dollars can be used in the community to have officers go out to churches and other groups and educate people regarding the laws, what the police is responsible for, and what their duty is, and teach these young people not to run. Stand there and teach these officers how to communicate with the public. Teach the public how to communicate with the officers and understand how the laws work in our society, how the constitution works. Force on force is not gonna get it. It's just gonna keep snowballing and snowballing. It's gonna get worse and worse till we just gonna have just a chaos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Cliff-
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I hate to back up for a second, but, um, is it Mr. Daimoff? Was it you that said we had not done anything about Optimus Lake? Okay. Were you aware that we had a meeting, uh, about Optimus Lake with the Property Owners Association and anybody that wanted to come? And we outlined a detailed plan about, uh, what the steps were. The letter was sent to the Property Owners Association on, um, September 8th, 2023. Nick Amberger attended, and we explained exactly what needed to happen, and you told, we told you the park that we could play in that. And also, we had no jurisdiction over that lake until annexation. And so we weren't in a position to do anything with that lake. And so, you know, there've been a lot of accusations of people that don't have all the information, and I don't think you were trying to falsely accuse us, but we have proactively reached out to try to help the property owners around there to do something, and we haven't been able to move that ball forward. And I'd be glad to share the letter with you. Okay, well, I, we-
Mayor, how about-
We can, we can follow up with you later.
Yeah, if, if you would get together with the mayor and with engineering and public services, I think that will help bring you up to speed and get you more involved, if that's okay. Ms. Lambert?
Cliff Kennedy regarding Resolution 6390.
Uh, Cliff Kennedy, President of Friends of Municipal, just want to say thank you for the consideration, tell you a little bit about what we've done over the past now five years. Um, I had my oldest son, uh, I never went to Municipal Park, but, uh, my oldest started playing T-ball there and realized how bad the conditions were of that park. Uh, the bathrooms could not be used, uh, the fields were running down, there was no grass on half of the fields, or the football fields for that matter. And so maybe I want to take it upon myself and figure out how to do it, and luckily we have an asset, and Shonda Smith in the city, uh, reached out to her and said, how can we do this? And Friends of is a group of people that want to get behind and have public-private partnership with the city, and it's done all across the country, talk country, um, in many parks and cities. And so with her guidance, over a course of a year, we discussed, how do we do this? How, how can I help get the city behind us and help us? And through capital improvements and the help of our previous contract, where we're moving forward, the capital improvements that we're putting into that park now of improving the field so the kids can actually play on grass rather than dirt when they're playing football, or the kids actually using the bathrooms now, um, and revitalizing that park that hadn't been touched in probably 20 or 30 years, uh, to where it is now. So the Renaissance where we have now, uh, the revitalization of the, the park, uh, and the future plans that we have to continue to capital improve that park with other major improvements, ADA compliance amongst one of them being next, because it's really tough when you see some of those grandparents want to go see their T-ball kids, um, and there's no wheelchair accessibility for them. So there has to be a lot more to be done, so I appreciate the consideration and the funding for this- So I appreciate the consideration and the funding for this project.
Cliff, you can have a seat, thank you. But I just want to follow up on that a little bit. We had had some questions from people who thought that Cliff's group, and I know you've got a couple of other folks here from the park, why don't y'all stand up? This is representatives from football and baseball, correct? Great, thank you for coming. But there were some questions from some people who had seen information about this resolution, questioning why there was a Dothan address. The Dothan address is for a registered agent, has nothing to do with the home address of Cliff or anybody else involved in the park. And we had our attorney provide information about exactly what a registered agent does. And Michael, if you would just repeat that for the audience listening today in this meeting.
It's just a general requirement by law that business organizations, whether they be corporations, LLCs, or whatever, have an agent designated to accept service of process. In other words, if they get sued or something like that, they have to have somebody on state record that they can send that to. A lot of companies, I presume, like Friends of Municipal Park, hire a company to do that for them. The companies can have it be their home address or whatnot, but a lot of them just hire a company to do it. A lot of them are in Montgomery, Birmingham. This one is apparently in Dothan, but it has nothing to do with the ownership or operations or contracting of Friends of Municipal Park. It is a company in Dothan that provides this service to other companies.
The funds that are being proposed for this will be capital use, and the Friends of Municipal will keep up with everything that they spend and what it is spent on. The funds that we have contributed in the past have been used for capital, and so this will continue. But providing a little extra this time around will also provide an opportunity for the park to get grant monies. A lot of times we find that private organizations, foundations in particular, like to see the city put skin in the game before they will actually then grant those monies to match what the city has put in. This is very similar to what we did with the Mobile Botanical Gardens. We provided funding, they immediately were able to get grant monies to match what the city put in, and now they are well on their way to having a tremendous success at the gardens. We want to see that happen for municipal football and baseball. Cliff is right, over the years, the city was not able to make the kind of improvements that needed to be made in this park. What we were able to do were basically Band-Aids. Then when I had capital improvement funds, you know, thanks to everybody for making sure that we have capital improvement funds, I was able to put money into the park. But again, with everything else that we have to spend money on in our districts, I was not able to put enough into municipal football and baseball. With this money going as a public-private partnership and then their ability to raise money, it will provide much more funding and make more improvements that are sorely needed at this park. People have played at Municipal Park for years, and for years they've complained about the restrooms, about the fields, about parking. And luckily, we have had tremendous volunteers at the park. If it wasn't for the volunteers and the family members at the park taking care of the fields, mowing the grass, running the concession stands, we would not have been able to make it. So Cliff and all of you all at the park, thank you so much for what you were doing, and thank you for your patience in getting us to this point. Thank you, Shonda, and your team for working with the Friends Group to make it all possible. So thank you for what you're doing, and I just urge my council members to approve this today so that they can get started doing a lot more out at municipal football and baseball. Anybody else?
All right. Mr. Foose.
Ms. Lambert.
John Robb again, three oh eight Wacker Lane.
What Ms. Lambert was saying is that you have to sign in at the door if it's not on the agenda, which it is on the agenda.
Yeah, he didn't sign in.
But you still have to sign in if yes, right?
Karen Foose, I live at one one two Ryan Avenue in Mobile, Alabama. I'm speaking on behalf of Municipal Park Baseball. I'm the acting president, as Ms. Gregory said. But I want to let y'all know kind of y'all's investment in Friends, which goes into the park from a baseball lens standpoint. We have a banner year this year. Well, we have over six hundred and fifty kids at the park, that's male and female. Our relationship with football is exceptional. Kenneth has kids doing a little spring training on the football field while we're playing baseball. We're having fall ball at the park while they're playing football. So the relationship and the vision of the private public partnership is really working. So first of all, thank you. But with this increased funding and the consideration that y'all have given, we can continue that momentum, and we do have tremendous volunteers. It's not just, you know, money and then it's done. We have a great volunteer base that does everything with the fields and the facilities as well. So thank you for y'all's consideration. And in closing, thank you for all that y'all do as a council and the Mayor's Timson Administration. Thank you.
Ms. Vice President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carroll.
I want to let you know I'm going to support you on this. I hope we got five votes so we don't get twelve other people coming. But courtesy guys, I coached out at municipal baseball, T-ball back in the day with Bo Baggett and Burke Holder. We drug the fields ourselves, we cut the grass ourselves, so I'm with you. But for District Two, I wish I could have a group like you at my park down at Texas Street and one over at the Sullivan Center. I'd be glad to put together something like this in my district where we had a Friends of District Two parks. That'd be great. Thank y'all.
Crystal, and I'm sorry, I can't. Regarding twenty-one, three ninety-eight.
Crystal Fysen, Theodore, Alabama. Well, I want to first start by saying I'm completely disappointed in all y'all's behavior. See, y'all want the youth to show their elders respect, but y'all can't even respect each other. You, Ms. Gregory, were just talking to a reverend with complete disrespect, complete disrespect. But you would like respect, I'm sure, from your community, correct?
Yes.
Exactly. So see, it's always reaping and sowing. Mr. Daze, same exact thing, complete disrespect. How do you want order in a community that you don't have order in?
I'm sorry.
That's not how it works. That's not how it works.
Ma'am, would you hang on one second, Ms. Lambert?
Ms. Fysen signed up to
Talk about the tasers. And that's what I'm talking about. So thank you for your time. So if you want order and structure in a community, starting with the mayor at first, you have to give it. I heard your statement last week about the police and that nobody's perfect. That's right, nobody is perfect. We're expecting you to walk in morality and integrity. And the character that lady you had come in here telling everybody about, we don't see it. And so, back to the tasers. When last year, when you guys came into the community and killed Dallas, remember that? No, I'm talking about tasers. So you want to put
Hang on one second. One of the rules that we have in this chamber is that
Respect?
Hang on, hang on.
Is that what you want?
M, we don't allow people at the podium to address anybody specifically. So I'm the chair, so go ahead and just address.
You want respect?
I'm asking you to
I want you to give it.
Rather than
I want you to give it.
If you will address me, I will respect you if you respect me.
And as I stated, the tasers that you guys want to invest in, what's the point of spending more money on something if the person behind the taser has no character, has no morality, and doesn't know how to use it? As I stated, last year, you guys came into my community and killed a young man with a taser. Do you guys remember that? Is everybody aware of that? And so now you want to put more money into spending on tasers? What does it matter what type of taser it was if the person behind the taser doesn't know how to use it? See, lack of integrity is what I see in this whole entire chamber. And I didn't come here to blow smoke up your tail. I came up here to speak judgment from the top to the bottom. Because in order for you guys to know what it means to walk in some morality, you got to be taught. And as the head goes, so goes the rest of the body. That's why we see shootouts. You expect the youth to know how to communicate with each other? You guys don't even know how to communicate with each other. So I'm not here to blow smoke, I'm here to pronounce judgment on each and every one of these people in this session, and I expect the Most High God to back up these words, and that's starting with the head to the bottom. Good day.
Deborah May regarding sixty-four, zero, twenty-eight. Okay, so we have Deborah May, Jennifer Richburg, and Wanda Cochran regarding sixty-four, zero, twenty-eight.
Good afternoon. I am not Deborah May, I am her lawyer. And Ms. May operates a five-person daycare in her home. And we have talked about this a few times, and I don't want to be repetitive, but I sincerely want to thank you guys for what you do, seriously.
Wanda, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah. So just a couple of things. I think my sense of listening to the discussions is that everyone agrees that Ms. May is a great operator, and that lack of daycare, convenient daycare, safe daycare, quality daycare in the community is a problem that needs to be addressed. So I'm glad there appears to be a consensus on that point. But I did want to say, first of all, this is not a rezoning case. This property is Zone R1, and it will stay R1 after the permit is granted. There are not going to be any changes to the exterior of this property except for the changes that are mandated by the city code. It will remain a home. The application is for a conditional use permit. Daycares of up to twelve children, between six and twelve children, is allowed in the zoning district R1 if you meet certain conditions. And if you look at the zoning code, the conditions you have to meet are related to the building integrating in with the neighbors. So I'm going to move on because I want to make the second point before I run out of time. I took a quick look, you know, the UDC is new, and based on my research, y'all have only had three daycare applications since the UDC was adopted. The first one you unanimously denied. The applicant in that case didn't even show up for the hearing. The second application on Belvedere Circle, you unanimously approved. And if you look at the application that was approved and Ms. May's application, they're virtually identical except for I think Ms. May goes over and above what was approved in Belvedere. For example, her, the standard lot size in a suburban community is seventy-five hundred square feet, her lot size is ten thousand square feet.
Your time is up. Any, do I have another? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. A location is superior. This house, Ms. May's home, is on, faces Highway ninety. She's in the Lansdowne subdivision. This is out past Blue Lot. It actually faces the Service Road along Highway ninety. There are no houses even across the street from her. So there is no problem with circulation. There's nobody going inside a neighborhood. There's a traffic light there. The the fear that, you know, this term conditions that run with the land, I think that sounds kind of scary. But what you have to understand is that even if Ms. May were to sell her property tomorrow, that new owner would have to comply with the conditions that are in the ordinance and any condition that this council places. And those conditions
Thank you, Ms. Cochran, appreciate it.
And let me thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning, my name is Deborah May. I think most of everything that can be said has been said. I have the support from the community, I have the support from my homeowners association, and I have the support of the childcare community agencies all the way from Montgomery. I always have, and I will continue to have a respectful and a responsible business. Family childcare, I'm not sure how much research has been done, but family childcare, daycare homes are in this manual. This is our licensing regulations. Childcare centers is in this regulations. We are two separate things. We have to live in the home that we do this in. And I think that there's some gray area, I guess, between the two. You know, I have a home that's large, I've had four children that I raised in that home. And back in the day, I had six children. So I already had ten children by myself in that home for many, many, many years. No one ever knew that I had a home daycare. I have letters from everybody on my neighborhood stating they support this. I had a homeowners meeting just last week where they asked to see if it had been approved yet. I had to say no, but I did tell them that I may, if approved, have to do a variance for parking. And they said that as, if you look at my neighborhood, we have many homes that have circle driveways, and that should be adequate parking for, you know, a family daycare group home. So I just, you know, I hope that you will take this serious. Childcare is very serious, especially for infants and toddlers. And the ratio for homes, it would not be, I know Mr. Reynolds, oops, sorry. There was a concern about noise level and traffic. I have families that already have more than one child. One, as I said, was just born a couple of weeks ago, has no place to go. I, as far as noise, I have two rooms. You know, I will have five children, my daughter will have five children. When we go outside, there's still five children outside, there's not ten children. So there is no more noise. The traffic, if you have multiple children, do not have as many cars. And my neighbor up the street, she's already spoke at the planning commission, has two children that she's having to care for. She is elderly and she cannot. So those children are going to multiple family members who have the day off just to be able to survive childcare because they're on waitlist. So thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jennifer Richburg, and I live at three thousand four Blue Ridge Drive East. I have experienced twice now the extreme difficulty of finding childcare in our community. The first time was in May of two thousand twenty-two, and my husband and I moved here with our nine-month-old son. From May to September, we weren't able to find a spot at any church daycare, childcare facility, really anywhere. So my husband was unable to work until we were able to secure that childcare for our son. Luckily, we found a spot with Ms. Debbie. And now that we've just had our other daughter, three weeks old up there, we went through the same exact problems two years later, trying to find a spot for her, even, you know, applying to waitlist everywhere that we could find as early as we found out that we were pregnant. So it's an extreme need that we have here in Mobile. I think that it's obviously a nationwide crisis, but there is a way that we could, you know, help solve it today in Mobile. You know, when I'm not a full-time mom on maternity leave, my day job is in economic development, and I actively work to recruit companies to locate and expand here and invest millions of dollars in our community as well as hire hundreds of people. And, you know, they always come into town, they're asking me about quality of life, and you know, the main topics are going to be median household income, cost of living, our school system, and then the three A's of childcare. So you have affordability, accessibility, and availability. And as much as I love Mobile, and it's a great community, nowhere else I would, you know, choose to live, that last one's kind of tough for me to sell after everything that I've been through, twice now, trying to find childcare for my children. I think that obviously Ms. Debbie being able to take on five more kids isn't going to solve our crisis, but it's a start. It's five more spots that you would be able to go to children that need, that need a good spot, need someone to take care of their kid, and it would be with the best childcare provider in Mobile. So if there's, you know, any way that you guys could please vote to approve today, I think that it would really make a big impact to the people that are able to have their kids with Ms. Debbie, and we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I want to say congratulations on the birth of your child, that's fantastic. You know, this is a difficult one, but it really doesn't have to do so much with the childcare aspect, you know, what we are considering, but this is a property matter. And, you know, we have a responsibility to protect our neighborhoods and make sure that they're going to be secure for years and years to come, and any encroachment on them sort of is fitting And any encroachment on them sorta is fitting to the neighborhood. And I recall when we passed the UDC, this was a topic of discussion, this um allowance, this conditional use for a uh child daycare up to twelve children. And, you know, one thing that was not fully contemplated was that it would be appropriate in a neighborhood, you know, especially a home with houses on three sides, uh to accommodate these sort of commercial features of a house that, you know, if you had a big R1 lot, say, and outside of a neighborhood, which exists all over the city, that that would be an appropriate use of that property where it would apply. In in this scenario, you know, the the heavy concern is the the introduction of special condition or changing conditions to the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, there's a part of our UDC that that deals specifically with home occupation. And it says, "An accessory use of a dwelling conducted entirely within the enclosed dwelling, employing only the residents of the dwelling, is clearly incidental and secondary to the residential occupancy and does not change the residential character of the property and is subject to the criteria set forth in Article Four." And it seems like the operation of a child daycare with up to five children sort of fits within that. But what this applicant is asking to do is double intensity of the use in an R1 neighborhood, compact neighborhood with neighbors on three sides. So what comes along with that? You're gonna have additional traffic. Yes, toddlers don't drive, but their parents certainly do. Um, you you got the potential for noise uh being a concern, you know, more children outside playing, you know, in the backyard. Although, uh, you know, that may not be the end of the world, but it it's certainly something that needs to be considered. Uh, the coming and going of staff or employees, which in this case is uh the applicant and her daughter. Um, some other concerns that must be considered is, once this property is converted to a commercial property in a small residential neighborhood, you have to be concerned with, say, twenty, thirty years from now, the devaluation of surrounding properties or neighboring properties. Um, you know, there, I would say your your potential buyers is going to decrease if there is a a commercial operation of a daycare center in a house. So, you know, it would be harder to find a buyer for somebody who's willing to live next door to a commercial operation, you know, in a neighborhood. Those things that, you know, I think are very important and must be considered. And, you know, I I think we as a government, as a city, you know, have, you know, been charged with, you know, providing uh reasonable restraints for the general health, safety, or public welfare of the community. And I think this goes to the core of that. And I, again, I want to um commend Ms. May by all accounts. As Ms. Cochran stated, she operates a first-class facility, and nobody is trying to take that operation away from you. Your operation that you have now, I stand with you. I support you in in what you're doing. But the expansion to a commercial operation, I think our zoning code allows for that operation to happen in an appropriate zoning district. Unfortunately, in a neighborhood, in a house with a smaller lot with three other neighbors surrounding it, does not fit this use. And again, it was not contemplated. So, you know, I ask that the council, you know, vote your conscience. Don't vote because of me. You you vote the way you want to vote, but I am not gonna vote in in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Ordinance is held over sixty-four zero twenty-eight. Consider a conditional use permit for property located at fifty thirty-two Government Boulevard.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Jay's not here, so.
We, uh, m- Madam Vice President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carroll.
Uh, I move for immediate reconsideration of this uh ordinance, sixty-four zero two eight, being placed on the agenda for next week, considering that we are missing one council member that may determine the outcome of this. I need four votes for that.
Um, Madam Vice President, that can only be done by the prevailing side, and there is no prevailing side.
Well.
Uh, it's forty-two, and I am on the prevailing side.
Hang on, Mr. Lender.
That's a tough one.
Well, the the motion was to approve.
It's 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 a motion to reconsider.
Motion reconsider.
Because the 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 motion failed. So I would say that a, it would have to be somebody on the on on the prevailing side was was actually the ones who voted against it.
Against, yeah.
All right. Well, the next question is, is uh can I offer this up next week? It's not my district with a new number.
How how does it work when something like this fails?
I believe we would have to go through the entire CUP process again. I mean, the 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 measure has failed. Does planning and zoning have anything? That would be my interpretation of it.
If you allow it to come back, the possibility of this passing is stronger than the possibility of it failing.
Since we're missing a member.
But what, i- if we do it for this item, we, are we gonna do this every time an item fails to capture five votes when there's one member missing?
Just just asking if you'll consider it.
I I would say that um we're, this, there's nothing on the table for discussion at this point. Point of order, you know, next item.
Right, right. Mr. Reynolds is right. Sorry, it it failed.
Bring it back.
Consent resolutions held over forty-two ninety-three. Declare a structure at twenty-one fifty-four growth quarter of public nuisance in order demolished.
Move to hold over thirty days.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-three ninety. Determine an appropriation to Friends of Municipal Park serves a public purpose and approve payment.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
CIP resolutions held over zero-eight three ninety-one. Approve purchase order to Game Time for shade structures for Hackmire Park.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions held over zero-eight three ninety-two. Approve purchase order to beer equipment company for turf, for turf sprayer. Zero-eight three ninety-three. Approve purchase order to Insight Public Sector for annuals, annual subscription renewal for April Kott case management software. Zero-eight three ninety-four and three ninety-five are approving purchase orders to Jerry Page Turf and Irrigation for more, for and more, for for moors for Azalea City Golf Course. Zero-eight three ninety-six. Approve purchase order to Southern Earth Sciences for geotechnical services for Three Mile Creek Trail. Zero-eight three ninety-seven. Approve purchase order to Cyrus Ford for two crew cab pickup pickup trucks. Twenty-one three ninety-eight. Authorized contract with Axon Enterprise for body camera equipment and software. Thirty-one three ninety-nine, oh, thirty-one three ninety-eight, no, that's three ninety-nine. Authorize a grant application to the Alabama Historical Commission in support of their historic sites grant.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on these resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-four zero twenty-nine.
Our council rules these will lay over one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced zero-one four zero three through sixty-four zero nine.
Move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of these items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zero-one four zero three. Authorize appropriation agreement with Mobile County Commission for Country Club Road Sidewalk Project. Zero-nine four zero four. Transfer funds from District Four discretionary account to Parks and Recreation General Fund Account to assist with Mem's Park Field Aid. Thirty-seven four zero five and four zero six are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer off-premises-only license to El Valle Market on Airport Boulevard and for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to all the smoked seafood on Mark Lamar Drive. Fifty-eight four oh seven and four oh eight are authorizing removal of weeds, Group sixteen fifty-six, and assessing cost for removal of weeds, weed lean, Group sixteen fifty-one. Sixty-four zero nine. Determine an appropriation to Stewart Memorial Christian Methodist Episcopal Church serves a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on these resolutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolutions being introduced zero-eight four ten. Approve purchase order to Akatus US Inc. for ethernet switches and transceivers for traffic signal upgrades.
My council rules this item will lay over one week.
Resolutions uh being introduced for the first time, zero-one four eleven through twenty-five four seventeen.
My council rules these items will also lay over one week.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one four eighteen. Call for public hearing to consider the application of Nasa Pope for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a non-emergency medical transport service scheduled May twenty-first.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Announcements?
Uh, start on the right-hand side with uh Mr. Woods.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, just uh quickly, uh, uh, sent a newsletter out last week. I'm attached to that newsletter. Um, the District Six newsletter was a um a form, uh, seeking feedback, a link to a form. Um, I'll share that um on uh on the, on my uh Facebook page um again, and then hope, and then hopefully we'll send it out again. Um, but I am seeking feedback on uh capital expenditures since it's that time of year again to start looking at budgets. Um, uh, like I said this morning, uh, one more thing, uh, as far as District Six meetings, um, we can continue to be the most frequent and most often uh meeting of all the districts. And uh it's that time again, uh, to have the meetings. I'll be looking for announcement um here shortly in the next couple of weeks um for next month uh for a meeting. And then finally, like I said at pre-council, I'm had the opportunity and honor to attend the uh the Academy for Craft Trainings signing day-to-day, which amazing, uh, amazing organization, amazing group, uh, uh, basically taking juniors in high, uh juniors and seniors in high school, um, training them up in the skilled trade craft, and then offering them the opportunity to immediately step into the workforce. So I do want to say congratulations to to those that today signed and are immediately starting and going to work. And um, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Daze. All righty, uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Um, I want to thank District One. We've been having some amazing meetings. We had five meetings in the last two months. Um, so we've been doing um a great job meeting with everyone in the community. We have some more meetings that will be coming to the Volterra community as well as to Trinity Garden community. Um, and so I want to thank everyone that showed up last night to our Midtown Community Meeting where we discuss a lot of great things. So again, District One, thank you uh for allowing me to serve. I'm District One, you're District One, we're District One. Thank you, Madam Vice President.
All right. And no announcements from four. All right, thank you. Just one announcement from uh District Seven. As you heard earlier, we had a groundbreaking fourth, the Live Oak Trace uh development. These are apartments, as you heard, fifty-six units for seniors, fifty-five and up. And applications will be taken uh soon. Uh, signage will be posted on the property. It's located at the corner of Middle Ring Road and Overlook Road. These will be very nice apartments, and I look forward to seeing them come out of the ground. We also have some other affordable homes being constructed in District Seven, in Hillsdale and in Mobile Terrace, um, either by Habitat for Humanity or some private developers are also developing in the area. We just need more of those to come to the table. Anybody else? Um, we have a committee meeting of the whole. It is a committee of the whole meeting coming up this afternoon. Since we are running late, we are going to have to push the committee a bit. Members, I was thinking one forty-five? One thirty? Okay. We will reconvene at one thirty. Thank you.
Motion, you got a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.